Joe? No, Joe. John?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Alex?
Here.
Justin?
Here.
Jen?
Here.
I'm here. Mike?
Here.
Julie?
Here.
Peter?
Here.
And Mary?
Here.
All right.
Looks like 11:00.
We have a quorum.
Okay.
We're just missing Joe.
Yeah, he was at the meeting right before this, the finance and operations. So I don't remember him indicating whether or not he couldn't make this review. So he probably brought.
I just received a text message from him. I'm going to send him an invite. Actually, Ben, if you can send him an invite directly to the, to the room, that'd be great.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on agenda items? Anyone from the public with us who would like to comment on matters that are on tonight's agenda?
Can somebody mute their TV?
Is it me?
I don't know if somebody has a TV on.
Ah, seems to have been gone.
Good, thank you.
All right, it looks like Joe has joined us. So are there any members of the public who wish to speak on matters on tonight's agenda? If you are muted or are trying to communicate, please unmute yourself. I don't hear anyone. So we are going to move on to the, with the agenda, to the consent agenda. Board of Education minutes from November 16th, 2020. Does anyone have any amendments, modifications, or wish to take this off the consent agenda for that purpose? Hearing none, those minutes are deemed adopted. Megan, updates on COVID-19?
Well, I first want to say thank you to everyone for your patience. And you know that sometimes the stress of the holidays, we recognize that people are going to have different celebrations and what's going to happen. And they have to say our community was absolutely wonderful and successful. And they did have many gatherings that were beyond governor's recommendations. Many people have chosen to self-quarantine and remote learn. So it's been a good community. So I'm going to share my screen that just has some of our COVID updates. I think that sometimes when we see it on screen, it helps us just see the updates for what they are. One of the things that I'm trying to do right now is send out a weekly update to our families so that way they can know how many of our staff, students may be quarantined or have tested positive. So that way we're not talking about what ifs. We're not talking about hypotheticals. We're working in what is current and real time data. So to start off, what you'll see is that we had our totals starting from August 31st till November 20th. And as you can see, we've had four positive staff members at Chippewa. We have not had any at our primary schools. We have not had any students at our primary schools test COVID positive. We have had four from Chippewa. Our staff that has been put into quarantine due to close contact, we had 14. And for our students, and as you can see here is where we did have at our primary schools, we've had three students at our primary schools, and we have had 61 students at Chippewa. The biggest draw on that was when we had to shift our sixth grade to remote learning. But it is one that I want to make certain everybody is looking at what our numbers are. There are many districts around us that their numbers for those who have been in quarantine, those numbers who have been actually infected are in the hundreds. Sorry. The next thing is that when we returned from break, and these numbers are up to Friday, so we have had a couple of changes as of today. But as you can see from last week, we have that, we had two staff members who were considered close contact from Washington Primary. We had one from Chippewa. We have for students, we had one at Burnham, and we had seven at Chippewa. And the part that I wanted to make certain people noted is that these people who were considered close contacts began their quarantine immediately and did not return from Thanksgiving break. We do continue to contact trace as more information becomes available. But for right now, those who are close contacts have not been positive. The other thing I want to bring to the board's attention, and I do feel that this is important to know. We talked about at the beginning of this year, the cost of COVID to our district. And a lot of the conversation happened around the fact that we talked about what was the cost of PPT? We talked, PPTs, try that again, PPEs, sorry, too many initials in education. But what was the cost of PPE? What was the cost of our environment? What was the cost of electricity? So we talked a lot more about dollars that were going out of the district rather than also looking at some of these services and things that are not able to happen right now because of COVID. We actually, when you count this out, how many services and FTE that were in the classroom on March 12th that right now have been reassigned in different locations because of our need to make smaller class sizes, because of our need to put additional supports in other locations? So just taking a look right now, we do not have math intervention happening at Washington Primary Schools. Our interventionist at Booth Free School was serving as a first grade teacher. There was not intervention happening at Booth Free School until the end of November. The interventionist at Burnham School was serving in the co-teacher position, which meant we did not have intervention at Burnham School until the beginning of November. Currently, we do not have STEM and TAG that is happening within our buildings by a separate teacher. He's currently serving as a second grade teacher. We talked about we don't have elementary Spanish happening right now. Additionally, you'll see that our math tutor that was at Chippewa is serving in a different capacity so we could cover the fifth grade classroom. But that also meant that that math support was not happening at Chippewa during this time. We also know, and as we struggled and we all wrestled with the idea of reach not happening right now to its full capacity, both of those reach teachers are currently serving in different capacities. We did have a reduction of an English language arts teacher, and we also had a reduction of foreign language by .4. We were able to cover, and thankfully, the Chippewa team was able to be skillful in how they were scheduling so we could absorb some of those costs. But these are not dollars that have gone out the door. However, it's important to note, these are services we were not able to provide this year. So I want to make certain that some of those hidden expenses that it's brought to your attention. Because at some point, as we go into next year and as we look at what we're going to do in our recovery plan, it has to be a multi-year plan. I cannot cover nine FTEs in our budget next year. But this is one where we have to recognize the cost of COVID is not just in dollars. It's also in services. So I just wanted to make certain, I highlighted those things. Again, I could not be prouder of how our communities helped keep us safe and the, the way that interactions have happened. I can tell you that really this is a community who looks out for one another. When, when we hear of people who may not have, have not followed some of those guidelines that were put out by the governor, I can tell you our administrators have had private conversations with those people. We have corrected some of those mistakes that may have happened. But everything that we're doing right now is to make certain our children are safe in the school environment. And again, it's all of the efforts that our community has done that has kept our doors open. That completes.
Thank you very much.
Megan, can I just ask a quick question?
Yes.
In terms of your plan for next year, I know you mentioned that it's not your intention to bring to the board all of those changes back in one year, and I appreciate that. Are there any of those changes that you feel you're not going to ask for that FTE back? You think that because of a reduction in student numbers or redeployment, that that's changed that you're okay with even if COVID hadn't happened?
I, I don't think that there are changes on there that I am necessarily comfortable with a long-range plan on. I, I have to say, you know, right now, some of those enrichment opportunities such as having Spanish at the elementary level, it's going to eventually catch up to us. You know, there's the foundation that isn't going to happen that our students going into Chippewa have been afforded. To know that, you know, STEM and TAG has really helped strengthen our science at the elementary level. And I think, and Teresa would echo the fact that it really helped us transition to the next generation science standards. So looking at things that become my non-negotiables, I think it really becomes an intervention and the supports we need in order to make certain all students have that equal playing field. And how are we going to start building in those enrichment opportunities?
Okay, I appreciate that. And then I assume when we get to budget season, we'll hear about what your first priority in terms of a return for next year would be?
Absolutely. And we've actually created the budget process earlier in order to do some of that plan.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, can I ask a question?
Yes, please, Jen.
Great. Megan, can you just talk a little bit? I know you touched upon this a little, but just in terms of students going home for Thanksgiving and coming back into the classroom and the concerns that you have, obviously between now and Christmas break or holiday break, rather, winter break. What sort of concerns that you have? Are you hearing anything about from teachers or administrators or families about, you know, people not necessarily following the guidelines inside of the classroom?
No, I can tell you, we do have 42 more students who moved to remote learning at this time. So we are.
Since Thanksgiving?
Since Thanksgiving, yes, that's correct.
Wow.
So whether or not that is because fear that others would not adhere to those advisories or if it's they themselves who've made that decision that something happened and they weren't able to, to pull through some of those celebrations. And again, I appreciate people making that decision for the good of the community. But I can tell you, and you know, this is where a small town and small communities have helped each other because people have reached out and have shared if Facebook posts look like there was travel that happened elsewhere. You know, sometimes the, the sharing of stories, if they have even alarmed. I can tell you, some of our own students have called to our attention saying that we're not supposed to be there. That's not supposed to be there. And I can tell you, we've addressed it. I can tell you, we've corrected it. An uncomfortable conversation, but it's again, we're appealing to community health right now. And I will tell you, with every appeal that we've made directly, it has been met. So it isn't a contentious relationship.
And then just one follow-up question for that is that, and I know you just touched upon this, but I guess just really driving home the point of how Region 12 is faring compared to other districts. Because I just want to make sure that that really stressed, that we are in a much better position, which is why we're not distance learning fully, because I feel like that needs to be.
No, absolutely. I know that we have a, a number of districts around us who have gone remote. Many of them, it's because of staffing issues and the inability to appropriately staff after the holidays. Additionally, many of our neighbors are going to hybrid because everybody is now recognizing you need to get to that six feet of space. And that has been one of our most assets in the fight against COVID is we have been able to treat everybody like they have COVID. We have given everybody six feet. We have strict masks, and they are being enforced, you know, hand washings, the things that we're able to do with sanitization, ventilation. It's getting cold in our classrooms. I will absolutely tell you that, yes, kids should bundle up and dress warm because for the sense of safety, we need to make certain that we've got ventilation in those buildings. Those are our advantages. Square, square footage and low population are helping us keep our doors open. So additionally, our numbers are nowhere close to what some of our neighboring towns are experiencing. We have, when I gave you the number of eight positive cases as of Friday, I can tell you that, that number has potentially changed. Where we have a couple of things that are right now presumed positive, and once we have confirmation, a new letter will go out. But eight for some school districts is what they have in a singular day. And so we are very fortunate. We will continue to look at what is the real numbers that we're dealing with and not be run on assumptions and fear.
And just to reiterate too, that the fact that we've come this far in the school year and still been able to be in the position that we're in and knowing, and I don't mean to be Debbie Downer, but knowing that possibly January and February are going to be, could be bad. I think that we're in a really great position knowing that we could be reassessing and changing and shifting. So I just want to give kudos to you, the administration, for really just allowing the opportunity for the students in Region 12 to be able to have the experience that they're having, which is very different than other parts of the state and country. So I just, and our teachers, I mean, are amazing to be able to make a commitment to, to the students to be there is just huge. So thank you.
I, I have to echo, and you're absolutely right. It's all of those things that are combined that are making it happen. And I also want to say, and one of the things that gives me great appreciation is that the fact that people can choose to go remote. If it is something that they are not feeling comfortable, and if it is something, it is going beyond their comfort level. I'm continuing to look at the numbers we have, assess it with our Department of Health.
Yeah.
Go look at what our medical advisor is saying. Some of the other major, some of the other indicators that we look at, it's not just the fact that we have had eight positive cases. But we also watch for those who go out unquarantined, that would potentially be close contact to see if they come up positive. Because that goes to indicate that we may have a spread issue in the school, and we have not had that. So it also goes to say that the enforcement, things that are being done, all of those arrows that Mr. Croft taped to the floor to make certain that, that people are traveling safely in our hallways. It's, you know, all the reminders, and Mrs. Gal was standing outside at, at lunch duty, making certain as they finished eating, the masks are up. Every one of those actions keeps us in school another day.
And I'll just say one side note, and then I'm going to, I promise I'll be done. I just happened to be walking with a, a Region 12 parent, and your robocall came on, just notifying parents of, that the numbers had an increase and that we're in a good place and moving forward. And I just really appreciated that. And as a parent, I would just think that that's a huge relief, knowing that the next day in school, when they're going, that, that parents feel this sense of, okay, we're in a good place, we can send. So that was huge, and I just really appreciated that. It was just a random opportunity to hear, but kudos to you for that.
Mike?
Megan, it seems like that most districts right now in the state are kind of operating in one of three models, either fully present as we are, hybrid or, or full remote. It's my impression though, that if things get worse in Region 12, that hybrid is not an option you're necessarily think of, thinking of. That if things continue to get much more serious as far as COVID is concerned, that you would not move to hybrid, but you would move to full remote. Am I correct about that?
You are correct about that. And part of the reason other districts go to hybrid is to capture that six feet. We currently have that in, in our classroom. I think, you know, there's a couple that get down to five, but we genuinely have six feet in most of our locations. So going to hybrid doesn't help us capture the necessary social distancing. So if it is something that indeed we start seeing that type of a spread that makes us feel that it should go to hybrid, at that point, we would move to a remote learning.
And is there a magic number that you would use to make that decision? Or is that a decision that would come from the state or from the local level in terms of the health, health department?
So at this point, the state has made public statements that they're not looking to close down the schools. They want that to be a local decision. They have also, whereas before, when we first went into this journey together with COVID, we had the matrix regarding the spreads within towns, and that was going to be something that started the, the indicators on whether we have closed school. That was under the presumption that schools were the super-spreaders. Whereas what we found is our mitigation keeps us as one of the safer places to, to be in public. So as far as, if there's a magic number, I wish there was. What I really look at is what is the nexus to schools? What is the current spread that we have? So infection rate around us, we're looking at, infection rate doesn't have to be with students, but certainly with even their primary contacts. We look at what's happening and what may impact the schools actually running and operating safely. So I wish there was a threshold that I'd say, I'm waiting for this number to happen. I don't, but I review that number with, I review our numbers and what we have with our Departments of Health, with our medical advisor, weekly meetings with the Department of Health. All of those things are helping us to make these decisions, but as for.
Right, I know that they tell the general public, and you've communicated this too, that the three towns have been lately in either the red or the orange. But that doesn't necessarily tell us, for example, what the positivity rate is. I know that on the, the last time I heard for the state, it was around 6.5. I don't know if you get more specific data on what it is in Roxbury, Bridgewater, and Washington?
Yep, I get updates every Tuesday and Friday. They're based on the 14-day rolling average. It is, you're absolutely right, our numbers can be skewed because the per 100,000 people, we don't have 100,000 people. So therefore, you know, even, even one person is going to skew what our data looks like. We also have other things like during the time in which our private schools were open. Those were things in which positivity rates, when it was on the campus, also impacted our numbers locally. So watching for some of that data, trying to get a lot of clarification of if, if it's red, why is it red? Where is the spread? What is happening within that? If it is a certain group of people? So there, there are many, many factors that, that we're looking at in order to make that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Alex?
Yeah, one thing I just wanted to throw in about remote learning. And this is just a story, it's what I've been experiencing. A lot of people in anticipation of Christmas are self-imposing restrictions for two weeks because they're going to see grandma on Christmas, and they want to make sure they're safe. So part of these people going remote may be because grandma is going to come visit in two weeks, and we don't want to take a chance that Johnny or Jane have contracted COVID.
And, and you're absolutely right, Alex, and we want to make certain that we're supporting the needs of those families as well, appreciating that they're looking out for their health of their loved ones.
Yeah.
Think just about our kids.
Yeah. It's not just about what's going on with us, it's sometimes what's going on outside of us.
Absolutely. And then we are doing things to enhance the classroom experience and the interaction with the fused learning environments of both being remote and in class. So we're buying things like amplifiers so that way voices can be heard. Because I think in the past, it was hard to hear discussions when they were happening because the microphone was by the teacher. So as we continue to grow and evolve, we're trying to make certain that interaction and experience feels, feels a little bit more seamless, especially as we know we're seeing more numbers go to remote learning.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you, Megan. We're going to move on from this. I went on at length at last meeting, so I'm not going to say very much tonight, other than that to remind everyone that the superintendent opened schools 99 days ago today. And in that period of time, we have managed to remain open and remain safe and, and remain productive. And I think it's a tribute to the superintendent and her staff. I think it's a tribute to our students and their cooperation and their parents and their cooperation and understanding. You know, it's funny, people, people really have shown, I think, what they're made of in our towns in these last several, these last nine months that we have been in this, where as fatiguing as this is and as annoying as this is, people still recognize that, that they're, they're responsible for their neighbors, they're responsible for their friends, they're responsible for their families, and they take these precautions seriously. And I cannot thank people in our three towns enough. So we'll now move on to the superintendent's report.
I think that's a wonderful place to start. I think, starting with thank you. I, I think we know our staff members who gave up opportunities to be at large gatherings, to know that our community had their, you know, Thanksgiving table smaller to make certain that they were looking out for one another. And our students who really have adhered to every recommendation requirement that we've put in front of them. I think if anything, this pandemic's taught us how much we value school, the school day for our students. And it really is not possible without everybody doing this together. And I want people to know, we, inasmuch, and I love hearing 99 days, that just almost caught my breath there, how many days we've been open, but I'm going to say to you, it will never be blindly. There is not a, there's no special badge we get at the end of the year if we stay open all year long. It's really our belief that students learn better in the building. But I'm going to tell you, their health is always going to win out in all decisions that we make. So.
Can I remind you of something you said back at the beginning of this thing to me? It could very well be that our students will be safest in our buildings than they could be anywhere else. And it turns out, in general, not just our buildings, but in general, kids are safest in school. And it's been proven in, in just about every school system around here where I've talked to people, the children are not going to school and getting sick. They're, they're not. And I think that's a tribute to the way our schools have been run. And so thank you. I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
It is quite okay, and I'm, I'm highly biased, but yes, I appreciate it. I think our, our staff does an amazing job with that. So moving on to some other news that, that doesn't begin with C and end with Ovid. We welcomed two new animals. We welcomed Morgan and Gulliver on November 13th. So our horses are absolutely wonderful. I'm going to tell you, it makes us feel like a true program. And they are the sweetest horses. They are absolutely lovely. I've, I've learned a lot. Nothing scares you more than when you go out and see a horse lying down on the field and you think it's dead. Turns out, it just feels really safe. But, so there have been a lot of learning moments, a lot of catch-your-breath moments, but I think there have been wonderful moments. Our students who shoot horses today, so they were able to have that experience. We had out our, we, we had out our furrier who came out and worked with the students so they could see that entire experience. And Kim tells me that Nigerian goats are coming within the week. Is that still the case? The little, little Nigerian goat?
Nigerian dwarf goats, yep.
Nigerian dwarf goats, so absolutely adorable. And so anyone who'd like to come out and see our animals, they are usually put out during the weekends from, I believe it's nine to two o'clock. If people just want to see, do not feed our animals. We know that, that you love them, please don't. And it's one that more so just to see what our campus looks like when we have our animals on it. It, it really does look complete. So, and additionally, we will be showcasing our animals during the Holiday in the Depot. And when I say animals, probably just one, because it will be dark. But we want to make certain that people get to see, you know, the fact that our agro-science program is up and operational and those big, beautiful buildings are now housing something so beautiful inside it. We want to make certain that people get a chance to look at that. We know that, that holidays are different this year. We recognize that some of the celebrations have had to go virtual. I know that Roxbury's lighting of the tree went virtual. I know that Holiday in the Depot is drive-by. I know that the holiday in the depot is drive by. And so in that spirit, our schools have also been doing things a little bit differently, but still trying to carry on that cheer. So door decorating, that's been happening, and I believe there's now competitions for it. And um you know, the bazaar, we can't have the booths we used to. So instead, they figured out how to do pre ordering and how to take online ordering happening. And so again, recognizing that it's different. And the only way that our kids start to feel sad about it is if we lament over what we're not able to do versus when we get to celebrate what we can do. And whether or not we have holidays around the world that just happens outside and looks different, um it it still brings the joy to our kids and still captures some of those traditions. Um I do want to share and a special thank you to Nicole Grant and our agri science teachers. Um we are continuing to receive additional funds from our Perkins grant. So we're looking at greenhouse lights, a new horse step in some tools for our power structures um to the tune of eighty five hundred dollars in grants. And so again, a testament to working together and making certain that um we're not just um looking toward towns to supplies with the funds. We are certainly seeking funds to enrich and enhance our program where we can. Um and I want to make certain if anybody had a chance to see the ASAPs uh ASAP, sorry. ASAP is our attendance, let's say ASAP celebration of young photographers. Um a special congratulation to our seventh grader Lexi Thomas. Um she won the overall middle school category as well as Dylan's Wings Photography Award. And so um a special celebration, we're always so proud of the talent that comes out of Chappagh, but not just the raw talent, it is really what is shaped and crafted by our teachers who just do an amazing job with those programs. So there are more than two hundred and forty photos that were submitted throughout Connecticut. And the theme this year, go figure, it was quarantined. So our our students really had to capture images that reflect some of what they're going through right now. So that is my update. And if there are no questions regarding my update, I would just like to share some of the personnel um appointments that we have. Um oh, and I'm sorry, I just looked at the thing. We want to make certain that our board is included in pre sales for all of those products. We are happy to make certain that you are paying customers at any time. Um so I want to acknowledge we've had some appointments. So a welcome to Carly Gumm, um oh, I'm going to mess this one up. Gumm Lamps, yep, Eskey.
Colombeski.
Colombeski, thank you so much for saving me, Mr. Croft. That was just going to be a mess. Uh Carly joins us as the building substitute for Chappagh. Um and we also welcome Clayton Schneider, who will be our math tutor. Uh Clayton is an alumni from Chappagh, and we welcome them back to help our students with mathematics. Um and we also have the resignation of Elise Sadler, who was the reading tutor at S V S. Um we are fortunate that the person who's doing the long term um subbing for her position was able to accept the position. So we welcome Eric Handler as uh the permanent um literacy tutor for Chappagh Valley School.
Okay, very good. Before we move on to the treasures report, I just wanted to say that I got some uh in Roxbury, the food pantry for uh for people is run by Christ Church. And I wanted to say that they remarked that the enormous amount of donations provided by the kids at Booth Free School. So this is just another, another, and I'm sure this is happening in the other two towns. It's just another uh situation in which our kids give back to the communities that they live in. I just wanted to pass that along. They were absolutely thrilled with it to be able to have more food than they expected to feed people with needs. It's just a wonderful thing.
I think that was great because Greg, I will also tell you, I know that Chappagh is doing their donations as well. The Giving Tree that is happening at Washington Primary um in the food thing at in Burnham. So I can tell you that what you're seeing, it it's our students and in all of our schools. But um I will tell you, watching all of the bags that came in at Booth Free, it was amazing. I think they filled an entire truck to go give that.
That's just a wonderful thing. Um treasures report, John?
Yes, this evening, uh F N O Finance and Operations Committee met, and we did review the uh current operating budget. Uh the overview is in the board's uh packet. It's just the general summary. Um there were um some details in that the F N O Committee, Nicole explained specifically in the one oh two uh the distance learning costs were are totaled now at about fifty eight thousand. And this was not budgeted for. Um so that's running a little, you know, little um under budget. The one thirteen, you won't see this, but line one thirteen, non certified staff, meaning the paras. And Megan did highlight some of the other um additional um non certified personnel. That is trending a little bit of more than what was budgeted for also. In the two hundreds, uh specifically line two fifty unemployment uh is um in the negative uh by about twenty eight percent, mostly due to employees um who are not permanent employees of the district, but the when the when the unemployment um looks back, they go back five quarters. So if they were employed here at all, and there are about nine uh people who were employed here, who are now on unemployment, and that actually affects our um premiums. Um the five hundred sections transportation is taking a hit due to COVID related expenses um specifically uh to in district. One of the ones that is underwater uh is the in district um transportation to private schools. Um and the nine hundred section, you guys would be happy to know, uh especially the representatives from each of the towns, that a hundred thousand dollars was transferred into the elementary school fund. So that's going to have a a good balance for the, you know, for the operating expenses um for next for next year.
Capital, actually, John, I think.
Capital, yeah, the hundred, the hundred thousand um elementary's capital fund. And um we also discussed the upcoming, the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school budget um which is underway. The administrators have already met about four times. And tonight we got a list of the schedule. And some of the key dates, um January twenty fifth, uh the first draft of the budget goes to the F N O Committee. So that might be of interest to the the other board members. Um on February fourth, second and February fourth, and we talked about the possibility of maybe having a Zoom meeting so more people can um tune in. Uh the town finance committee members are invited and probably the selectmen. So um hopefully we'll get some good um viewing and some possible ideas or suggestions. March first, uh the budget goes to the F N O Facilities and Operations Committee. And March eighth, the superintendent gives her budget presentation. Uh March twenty ninth uh is the district budget hearing. And May fourth is the vote, the ultimate vote. Um all these meetings, you know, again, are are open to the public. And um, you know, hopefully, um people um become involved and and um try to understand the overall budget process a little bit better and where the dollars ultimately are spent. That's about it.
Good, thank you, John. We'll move on to committee reports. The first one, Mary, Kate, anything new?
Uh today was the last day of the December webinars. Um and the only other thing that I saw that might be interesting to anybody is the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence has a ten hour free course on social and emotional learning in times of uncertain uncertainty. Uh hmm, I can't remember how I'm ready, uncertainty and stress. And it's a research ba- based uh strategies. So I thought that maybe that was something that somebody might like to check out on. It doesn't, it didn't have a timeline on it, so um we'd have to keep look, I'll have to keep looking for that. But somebody may be interested in in doing that. It's open to all of us and to the staff.
Okay, thank you very much. Um curriculum and educational programming, Mike?
No update this month.
Okay, Alex, finance and operations. Alex, you are muted. Alex.
Saw that, yeah. Um John gave you a lot of what we talked about, uh so I'm not going to go into that uh the numbers. Uh the policy three, three, two, three, we discussed. That's how to put things out to bid or how we uh spend our money. Uh we determined that we were not prepared to discuss that tonight. Uh we're we going to revise it again and we'll present it at the uh next meeting. Uh we discussed special ed costs. Um in the past, we have not updated these in years. And these, uh these are not for the special ed for kids from region twelve. They're the, it's for the students that opt into our program. And so Nicole has come up with a new cost, which is basically our cost, which we will now pass on to the varying towns. Um this went into effect this year. Uh kids that were already in the program got a fifty percent discount for this year. All new students had to pay the full amount. Uh these amounts were considerably higher than what they've been paying in the past. Give you an example, uh we had a uh for uh oh, I've lost this, Nicole, maybe you can help me with this. Uh we were charging a dollar eight per hour for students that were getting help, sometimes in the groups of, say, up to three. But we're talking about maybe five to six dollars billed for that, which was obviously completely unreasonable. Uh my comment was you couldn't even get a big mat meal for that amount of money. Um uh so that's been updated. Uh the budget timeline was discussed. Uh also, Don has presented a five year uh facilities plan, which we just got tonight, and we're going to review it and uh try to look at some of the bigger pictures rather than the smaller items that get fixed on a yearly on a as case by case basis so that we can uh budget our money more prudently over the next five years. Uh we also received an agri science uh business model, uh which uh just came in. I have not had a chance to review it yet. Um but that is basically what we did. Let me just look through my paperwork here, make sure I haven't forgotten anything. Um I think that is it for me. Any questions? Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Alex. Labor negotiations, Jim?
There's no, no negotiations occurring at this time.
Okay, strategic long range planning, Julie?
Yeah, we don't have our next meeting until next week, but we do want to share what we have at this point for our brochure, which we want to launch next year in an effort to recruit new students. I think Megan has that to pull up.
Going to ask, are you okay with me projecting on the screen?
Yep. So I can't pull this down, but I guess you can. So this is what the cover uh will look like minus the logo, which we still are struggling with a logo, and we're looking at another person to help us with that because we're not pleased with that. Uh but essentially, this is the cover uh of the brochure. And there are, I think, five or six pages in total. There's a sort of a show off page here by the numbers, and this kind of highlights all of our awards and what we really believe is our, the things that we want to show off the most about our schools. Uh sort of an overview section. And then we get into a page that highlights each one of the schools and tries to differentiate between the three elementary schools. And finally, our flagship school of Chappagh. And the last page is a map of where we are and how to contact us and so forth. And a great picture of the boys reading on the grass. So so we think we've, Mike has really, Mike Croft has really helped a lot with this, as has Megan. And we think we've got almost a final product. We want to get that logo finished off and maybe do a little bit of updating based on the new ratings that came out and so forth, but we're really, really close to launching this and will do so in the coming year.
Thank you very much, Julie. I think it's a wonderful product. It looks, it looks great. Uh I really enjoyed going through it and thank you so much. Uh your logo's getting better.
Yeah, we've been struggling with that. We just can't seem to get what we want across to the experts. So we're working on it, but you know, I don't think it's the end of the world if we have to launch it without a logo. I think the document speaks for itself, but we do plan to have that finalized before we launch it, if at all possible.
Oh, that'd be great.
And and Julie, it's a good time to announce where our schools rank within Connecticut.
Yes, I thought everybody was aware of that. Has everybody seen the new niche report?
Yes, but go ahead and say it again, tell us.
So we're twenty third, right, in the state and number one in Litchfield County. And we think that's of course worth showing off and is much improvement. And as Greg stated, we're not going to stop till we're number one, but clearly, we're doing very well and we're on the up and up. So a very proud report that we all received.
Now, that's twenty third best school system in the state, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, yeah.
Megan, you and your staff, please, and your kids and everyone, please take a bow. This is really well deserved. That's that. That's great progress. Very proud of you. I'm sorry, Mike?
Julie, just a couple of questions. The brochure, by the way, looks phenomenal. I think it looks so good. Um I'll be excited when you, when you're able to send it out and get that first feedback from um from the community and from parents or prospective parents. Um as far as the logo is concerned, I know we spent quite a bit of time um a few years ago redesigning the Spartan logo. Was there any consideration of going with the Spartan logo or did you purposely want a new logo?
Well, the last logo that we were most familiar with was the Agri Science logo. And we are now working with that group to perhaps come up with the region twelve logo. I don't think we were looking at going with the Spartan logo. Uh Megan, do you want to fill in more on that?
One of the things that I think we we've tried to, there's, there's the Spartan logo that is about Chappagh. And I think what we're trying to do is really find that branding for region twelve, what unifies all four of our schools. And so, and that's one of the reasons even with, you know, right now, our, what we have out there that says Chappagh, whereas it means the Chappagh River, I think people, you know, naturally kind of gravitate towards the school, which can overshadow our our primary schools. So really taking a look and how do we capture what it means to be region twelve? And so that's been, that's been our push and what we're trying to do.
The river was something we have tried to work into the overall logo because we feel like that does touch all three towns. However, we just couldn't seem to get that across to our consultant in a way that we felt looked right and felt right for all, all four schools. So we're, we're still working on that. So we're, we're still working on that. John? I think you're unmuted.
I would have to agree. The Spartans represents the, pretty much the high school population. You have to include the elementary schools. When is the deadline for submitting the logo and the, and the brochure for publication?
Well, we want to get it out when, you know, obviously, when parents start to think about school for next year. So we're hoping after the first of the year, we would launch it. In my opinion, and Megan may have a different one, but we launch it with or without the logo. But I hope that we will have a logo and have it on a timely basis when we can attract students.
I was going to say, we have a lot of fine artists from everywhere, from kindergarten to 12th grade. Maybe there should be a contest or something to, for someone to generate a logo.
Well, we got sort of an education from our consultants about logos and coming up with something homegrown, which we did try, not in, in the way you suggested, but sort of on our own with some artists, is not what is acceptable in the world of logos these days. And I think they had good reason for saying that. So it's a little more complicated than I think all of us thought, but we're on it.
It's your ultimate brand opportunity and it's very difficult stuff. Having done this for, for firms that I've worked with, I know how you, I know, I appreciate what you're struggling with. Okay, Alex?
Would it be possible to go with multiple logos? To use the AgSTEM logo, the Spartan logo, and then have a third logo for the elementaries?
I think that's what, in fact, we do have. So we will continue to use our Agri-science logo. We'll have the Chapag Spartans. And our elementary schools sort of have their identity. And this is intended to be sort of an overall Region 12 schools identifier and logo.
Okay, thank you.
Jen?
I just wanted to add, because, you know, Julie, you need one more idea to just make it more complicated. But I just was thinking, as you were saying it and thinking about overarching, you know, logo and the river, but somehow incorporating, and I'm sure you already done, but a bridge over the river, where there's some sense of bringing all of, like what Alex was saying, all of it together, where there's this culmination of from beginning to end, a bridge over the river. I don't know.
Yeah, well, we're going to talk about that at our next meeting and share ideas with the new group. Make sure you bring that up then. That'd be great.
All right, okay, thanks.
Yep.
Okay. At this point, let's move on to new business and updates. And we'll start with Agri-science recruitment update, Mr. Boucher.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having me. I'm going to share the slides in the chat feature and then share my screen so you can follow along. It's going to look very similar to the last presentation that I did. And I'm going to provide specific updates in regards to that material.
Hey, Mike, can I just ask a request? Can you just maybe do it from the castle behind you?
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the first, it wouldn't be the first time. It was, it was kind of a, it was kind of a staple during distance learning. This is, this is my spot. So.
Just saying, it might, it might be cute from.
My comfort zone. I think Dexter's in there right now, my dog. All right, so there's that logo that we're all talking about. So here's an update as of today. Just a reminder, here are sending districts, Brookfield, Danbury, Fairfield, New Milford, Newtown, Sherman. And I'm happy to say that there have been presentations, virtual presentations at each school in the, in all of our sending districts. And it's been, it's been really nice connecting with the kids. I know it's different doing it in a virtual manner, but I felt more of a connection this way. And we've really made each presentation personal and really had kids from those sending schools that attended those schools assist us in those presentations and spoke specifically about their experience here at Chapag Valley School. So it was, it was, it's been exceptional. As you know, we sent out a brief promotional video that our very own Ben Allen worked very hard on. It's tremendous. That was kind of the first piece, kind of say, hey, we're, we're coming around. This is, you know, this is what we, this is what we have. Give them a little sneak peek of our program. And then from there, I worked directly with each sending school from sending district. So it varies. So Danbury, you know, Danbury has three middle schools in West Side, Broadview and Rogers Park. And as a former employee of that district, it was, it was nice to reconnect. And I actually have a follow-up presentation scheduled again next week with Broadview. I mean Roger, I apologize, Rogers Park, because, you know, last year, we didn't have as many applications from them. And I wanted to make sure, you know, our kids are, that our, our students were able to speak to them about their experience here at Chapag. So the Q and A sessions, what this looked like, we had, you know, some extremely well-attended, well, all of them were really well-attended. And there were a couple with, with only, you know, a handful of students. However, we set, we set up follow-up presentations with those schools. Each school district was sent this presentation video. I would show it right now, but it's 10 and a half minutes long. I shared everyone in the chat feature this slideshow, so you can take a look at this. And when I say presentation video, we understand that, you know, reading from slides for, you know, a group of distance learners isn't necessarily the best way to promote a program and keep their attention. So we were looking for something to talk about specifics of the program, keep their interest and, you know, make it fun. So one thing I will share about this presentation video, the Agri-science team, they were tremendous in helping put this together. And at the end, we have, I want to say 15 to 20 students, one after another, saying, I am Chapag Agri-science. And it really kind of came together nice. And the video ended with one of the drones from our ag program coming in on the Agri-science building, only to find a huge group of Agri-science students saying, we are Chapag Agri-science, and then throwing snowballs. So it really had a great, a great effect to it. So please take 10 and a half minutes, if you have it, take a look at that video. We spent a lot of time on it. We're pretty proud of it. So that was kind of the, the main course for those presentations. And then we had Q and A sessions to answer questions from students, from counselors, from teachers, from sending districts. And they were all a huge success. In addition, I'm happy to say that there is definitely piquing interest again this year from our eighth graders. Our ag team has worked tirelessly, tirelessly to make sure that there were lessons prepared within each pathway so that all of our eighth graders feel like they are informed enough of the program, whether or not this is going to be for them. And I'm happy to say that we'll have another good turnout as far as Chapag applicants. Not only did we do those in-house lessons, as you say, where kids were brought to different areas of our Agri-science program and, and virtually too. They, they were, they made sure that all of our students that were remote learners had this same experience. We also had an eighth-grade high school option presentation, similar to sending districts presenting on other options. So we have to present, you know, Oliver Woolcutt, and we have Abbott Tech. So we have to inform our kids of those programs, but I'm happy to say we really, really highlighted the Chapag Agri-science experience as part of this program. And Ms. Kelly Norris, the middle school school counselor, did an exceptional job in this presentation. As far as supplemental materials, we've sent out brochures and posters. Our lovely Sue Haverly, who is working tirelessly as the Agri-science secretary and really doing a great job, has been putting together monthly newsletters that go out to all the sending districts. We've been really hitting on social media, thanks to, you know, our incredibly talented Ben Allen. Some of the stuff he puts out, I just, it just continues to amaze me. And then the presentation video that I just mentioned in the previous slide, we are going to mail out one last mailing to all eighth-grade families. We're in the process of working on that to get it out before our deadline, which is going to be highlighted on the next slide. Well, not the next slide, slide after that. So our open house, as you may have heard, we had to shift to a virtual presentation. And considering that we, you know, shifted pretty much the day before, it was incredible. We had, I don't even think I'm right in saying 12 student volunteers. I want to say it's more like 15. We had 15 of our own Agri-science kids come to the school. We split kids up by pathway and there was an adult in each pathway. So we had, Principal Gallo was in the barn. I was in the power structural pathway in the, in the shop. We had Rachel Murray bounce back between the small animal room, the culinary lab, AKA the kitchen, and the greenhouse. So kids, you know, although they weren't able to experience it on campus, it really, from everyone I spoke to, it felt like they were there. It felt personalized. It felt, and it just went really, really well. So each pathway did a small virtual tour and had students speak to their experience. And how we selected students is we strategically did so based on the district they were sent from. And we also, you know, we had two different Zoom open house sessions for an hour each. We figured when we pivoted to virtual, let's make it more personalized and let's make the, the groups a little bit smaller. So we had three districts in each Zoom and it was, it was led with an introduction by Ms. Gallo, Mr. Croft and myself. We showed our 10 and a half minute video and then we cut to each pathway where they spoke about their experience and things that they're doing here at Chapag. There were approximately 37 interested families that attended and these do not include Chapag families. These were all sending districts. So the fact that this many families attended, when there were just as many signed up for the in-person open house, it was, it was extraordinarily successful. In addition, we are promoting an eighth-grade parent night, which is going to be next Wednesday, the 16th. That's going to be held virtually. Mr. Croft is, and Ms. Gallo are working hard to put that together with, along with myself and the department chairs. Right now, we've, we've reached out to all sending districts to make sure that these sending ag districts feel included for this. Because, you know, our message is, you know, you are, you are Chapag students too, right? You know, we're, you know, recruiting for the Chapag Agri-science, but they ultimately will have the same graduation requirements and they are Chapag students. They're not, and Chapag Agri-science students. Applications and deadlines, so this is a little different this year. Sue Haverly and I were chatting in the beginning of all this and we thought it would be, you know, it would obviously be in our benefit to have, you know, electronic submission in these times. So thank you to our IT department. They created us an email address, apply to Agri-science, where sending district counselors can send applications directly to this email. And it keeps it in a nice folder with all application materials. So the cool thing too is the state of Connecticut's application this year, where it wasn't as easy to edit it electronically. They've completely shifted that and it is electronic and you're able to edit it. I've been back and forth with counselors from other districts. It's primarily counselors, sometimes administrators, but I want to say all but one school, the primary contact is the counseling department and specifically one of their counselors. So I've been back and forth with them, ensuring they know everything they need to know about the application process. And I did want to include one note I had from a lovely young lady that I remember specifically. I didn't want to put her name in here, but she sent me a nice thank you card, you know, for one of the Q and A sessions. And I came back from Thanksgiving break to that and it, you know, it made my day. And I've really, really enjoyed, you know, spending time with each individual school, getting to know their kids. And I could tell you from those presentations that the future of Chapag, I know it's stepping, stepping outside and our future already is looking really good. But, you know, if these kids, a lot of those kids that I met with, if they apply and are accepted into our program, you know, sky is the limit. So that is my update. And I'd like to open the floor to any questions.
Just very quickly, I'd, I'd like to reinforce what Mike is saying. When he says he has regular communication with the districts that are applying to our program, what he actually has is a personal relationship with every single representation or representative from these, these schools. He calls them, he emails them. They know exactly who he is and where he is at every moment. Nice, nice job, Mike. Nice energy. And, and the, the last thing is, as much as I hate to be a party pooper, please take advantage of those links, the two videos. They're terrific, but please don't share them with anyone. They do present a very nice picture of exactly where everything is in our school, which then unfortunately, in this day and age, becomes a security risk. So we, we trust you folks. Enjoy them, but please don't share the videos anywhere. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Can I ask Mike a question?
Yes, please do. I can't see who's got their hands up because the screen shares.
I'll stop share.
So, so there, it looks like there's two videos. There's a video in the social media portion of the Region 12 website. That's about a minute plus. But you're saying the 10-minute one can't be posted on the Agri-science page? No.
So the minute and a half was really a promotional video that Ben Allen put together for us, kind of as an introduction to our recruitment. You know, as we put together the 10 and a half minute video, working with the teachers.
Okay. Mike?
Yes.
Just a question. I know that, Mike, you had said that you, you do presentations at the schools. Some of that is virtual, but.
It was, it's all virtual, Mike.
It's all virtual, yeah. The, the other question is, have any of the, the schools agreed to have links for students on their webpages? If they're, if they're interested, if they know about the opportunity, but let's say they missed the, the virtual presentation. Is there a way that if they're, if they're going to their guidance website for their school, that there would be a link for them to be able to go and see the promotional video or a link to your email? I mean, something like that.
Yeah, and so I can't speak specific to each website, but what I can tell you is that I, we realize that we might not capture every kid every time. And my message to the counselors is, you know, like here, they have the information, but reach out to me specifically. And I've actually had a number of kids from sending districts reach out to me for more information. And I've set up Q and As for individual kids.
And Mike, I can tell you that in a couple of our districts, like I know New Milford is one, they do have a direct link to us. I would have to circle back before I say with certainty for some of the others, because we did appeal that. I think that was a recommendation that the board had provided and I, I think it's a great one. I haven't circled back around to see if they are indeed up or if the link remains from the past requests.
So I could. Tell you, Sherman also does too. Sherman has one. And the link actually works this year and it's not like the old.
Always a good thing. Thank you.
Very good. Oh, I'm sorry, Mary.
Yes, this is specifically for John. I share a lot of things on Facebook about Region 12, but what I don't do is I don't share anything that Megan has not, or somebody else has not put on before, like on the Region 12 site or some of the PTO sites. I have on all of those so that when they report something, I will put it on Facebook on, on my other site that I have. But I will not do it unless they do it first so that I know that, that they know what's going up on, on Facebook and other social media ideas. So you might want to follow that kind of a rule, that if, if Megan or Kim or the PTOs put it on first, then you know it's okay.
Okay, thanks. Can I, one more thing?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Can I mention Bethel?
You can. So we were able to present to Bethel's curriculum. They are going forward on. They are going forward on December 17th at the Bethel Board of Education to make a decision to vote to join Shapog Agri-science. So right now, we're excited, but it is one in which we're waiting for their vote before we start moving forward. But we are very optimistic and, you know, obviously we welcome new additions. We're quite proud of what we have to offer and we'd offer it to the world if we could. So we're waiting for like the big send-off. I am one who I don't count the chickens before they hatch, but I'm going to tell you all, if everything goes well on December 17th, you'll see some really big emails and publicity.
All right, great. I think that's it for questions. Let's move on to the next item on the on the new business and updates agenda, which is social emotional learning. Mr. Brito.
Good evening, everyone. Give me a second here to share my screen. So it's a real pleasure for me to talk to you this evening about how we as a staff really came together to build resilience. And we're going to talk about partnership that we've had with neuroleadership and all the processing and progress that has occurred over the years, sorry, throughout the year and all the work that we did over the summer to make this happen. So our process really began in the spring because as you all know, during a time of uncertainty, certainly a time I never thought I would experience in my lifetime, the level of intensity to do our best for students, our best for families and each other was unprecedented. The teacher stepped up, the peer professionals, all of the support staff, everyone stepped up during the day, in the evening, throughout our experience. And we really were connecting on a daily basis, fighting to get through it together. And when the short-term lockdown extended weeks and weeks, it was taking a toll. And we did get through it. And then the summer break came and we realized, wow, we made it. Because there were days that it was hard. It was hard for the staff and for families to pull through such uncertainty. And so there was this heightened emotional focus. And so all the work that was done in preparation over the summer had to not only acknowledge what we had gone through, but actually point out the silver lining of how much resilience exists in each one of us. And we went through a process of our internal committee and an external partnership to help build the strength needed to start this school year that we knew was going to look very different. This school year focused on the work initially from the University of Pennsylvania's Positive Psychology Center. Resilience is a crucial ingredient for living a healthy life and the ability to adjust and maintain equilibrium isn't done easily. So our internal team, led by our very own Mrs. Burnham, who is a school psychologist at Booth and WPS, and along with Mr. Boucher and Dr. Byer, we all worked together to try to come up with professional learning that would build the capacity of our staff so they could see the resilience within themselves. And then I'm also going to talk about this partnership with the Neuroleadership Institute. So in August, we decided that we wanted to have folks reflect on how they got through the spring. And then we spent time in the coming weeks and months to really give them reminders of that. In our October PD, we focused on what additional focus do you need? And what time would you like in order to continue to really feel supported and resilient? And again, in November, we continued with building on our strengths. So this graphic in front of you was shared with the staff as our kickoff and they were able to reflect individually first on really what supports kept them up during those struggles? What strategies did they implement? And in regard to comfort and hope, what happened that did give them that potential to feel like they could move forward and they could get through it? And then again, what behaviors demonstrated that those solutions were actually happening? And the staff was able to get into breakout rooms and work together and share those strengths. Because sometimes we don't realize that we really do have a tremendous amount of resilience, but no one ever really brings it to light. So these activities and opportunities were really an entry point to the partnership that we had with neuroleadership. Just want to share a little graphic here of the strengths survey that the staff took because there are all these skills that we all have. And it was amazing to have them also take the survey. You'll get a link to the survey because it's a real interesting survey to take and kind of look at what might be your top five strengths. But love and honesty were so strong. And then looking at as a school, community, individual schools, maybe even by department, what strengths do we have in common and how did those strengths help us pull through times of difficulty? And how can those strengths continue to help us as we go through time of uncertainty and concern? So in addition to that, the partnership with the Neuroleadership Institute really laid out three key steps to help us take care of ourselves, take care of each other, and do what matters. And this first step of taking care of yourself was very well received. And the reason it was so well received was because the presenter actually validated feelings that we were having. We did have a loss of autonomy. We did have less certainty. All of those losses can have an impact on us, just like when we lose a loved one or we lose something that's of value to us. And so we were able to recognize, validate, have them understand what happens in our brains when we go through loss and how do we handle being vulnerable? And number one, has to be taking care of yourself. And through a lot of the work that was done, they were provided with stress levels and what does it feel like to be at a stress level one or two or three? And what can you do to cope with that? What buffers can be put in place so that you can feel that you can overcome whatever those stressors are? And the remarkable thing is that through this exchange, staff actually came forward and started to use the language. I'm at a stress level two right now and saying that to a colleague and having then colleagues really be there to listen and work together. I talked about the second step, looking after each other. And because we had this common presentation, this common language, everyone had the information provided to them at the same exact time. And there were little videos that were shared throughout the weeks in the fall to help keep this new learning at the forefront of what they were doing. And so as an organization, as a school district, if we have staff that are taking care of themselves, then they are better able to look after each other. And that's not just colleague to colleague. It's also giving our best to our students and our families. Because if we're not at our best, then obviously we're not coming across as our best either. And then the third step, delivering what matters, was critical because there's competing factors for our attention. And how do we really then focus? So rather than trying to multitask, perhaps we can chunk out tasks. Perhaps rather than looking at something as finite, we can look at maybe some opportunities of, okay, we're not there yet, but that's okay that we're not there yet. We're in this together. I thought that came across really strong from the presenter to the staff and they really did crave that validation of what they were feeling and that it was okay. And so the focus we had this year, that we were starting off the school year very differently than before, but trying to make it very special so that they were at the focus of all the decisions we were making and making sure they had the supports in place and that they had folks to go to if there were concerns that were becoming overwhelming. So we do keep going. I had to just put this in there because even throughout our presentations, we tried to add humor because although at times it's stressful, I mean, no one is perfect. And the fact that you don't have to carry forward by yourself, that we are in this together, we'll be able to do this for many, many more years and feel quite young while we're doing it, right? That's what we're trying to aim for. The other thing we did, really look for silver lining. What were some positives that had come out of the experience? And validating that for each other. And that was pretty special in the breakout rooms when listening to colleagues and maybe taking some tips from colleagues. When colleagues are saying, wow, I just love how you're able to handle a problem and break it down. I can't do that. I get overwhelmed. And so how can we help each other so that no one is feeling like they're in this alone? And so one of the other topics we talked about was what is the word for 2020? And pivot definitely came up many times. But agility, the ability to be agile is just so critical. And so that became a real relevant focus for us as well. And I'm looking forward to 2021 because I'm hopeful that the word for 2021 will bring us hope. And there was a celebratory aspect to our time together during professional development and at faculty meetings to fortify the work that we were doing and the focus for our own social emotional well-being. And it's this video that I'm going to share with you because it's so inspirational. It's a teenage youngster who was born with brittle bone disorder and just has such exuberance for life that we wanted everyone to feel uplifted by his message. And he really sends a message through music and his singing. So I'd like to share that with you right now. Sorry about that, but all your faces are like in my way, so I couldn't quite get to the volume control and I had it muted. But you'll be able to hear it now. I don't know if you could hear the words, but the name of the song is "I'm Not Afraid." And there are times in there where it just repeats, "You're not alone." And so that was a real strong message for our colleagues. And, you know, here we are almost in January, 99 days and still going strong.
Very good. Questions? Well, Dr. Brito, you've left us speechless.
That might be a first. But thank you. Thanks for allowing me to share because you don't necessarily know all that happens behind the scenes, but everyone's really working hard and it's a real pleasure to serve Region 12 students and families.
Well, we very much appreciate that. I think you're right. I don't think we know oftentimes what goes on every day in the classroom in these settings. And it's probably another reason why we want to keep the kids in the school as long as we can do that safely because this is where that learning occurs. No, thank you very much. That was outstanding. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is building diversity, tolerance, and inclusion. And we'll turn that over to Megan. And if we didn't learn anything from 2020, I think we learned this lesson. So maybe you can, it can help us understand.
I hope so. And just, you know, I think even when we're presenting these things, one of the things that Teresa has sent out to the staff and she does it at very timely intervals is the first one is care of self and then moving towards care of others and recognizing there's a progression that needs to happen. And so whereas we have to make certain that our staff remembers to self-care because sometimes they care so much about others that they forget themselves. And so making so that reminders happen and then how do we reach out? And part of that reach out is about recognizing what others are going through, which means being aware of inclusion that needs to happen. And I think as we've all watched what's happening in society and we've talked about this now at a number of board meetings, and I want to make certain this doesn't fall off of our radar. And so I had mentioned this too, being something that we were going to come back at. So I just want to share with the board some of the things that are currently happening. And I'm not going to retune this entire slide, but as you know, this was something that was included in your board packet. But I want to make certain that we're really highlighting all of the efforts that are happening within our schools to make certain safety is not just the physical safety, but the emotional, to make someone inclusive and supportive. And that is inclusive and supportive of not just, you know, kids who are within the school, not just of different races and, you know, sexualities and all different walks of life, including those who may not hold the same abilities. And so we want to make certain that we're recognizing that. And sometimes those abilities may even be social. And so things that we are currently doing within our schools to make certain that we are constantly reviewing that everyone is working with one another in order to. in order to emotionally support one another, in order to include others. In the elementary schools, we have a second set program that has been happening for a number of years. And that is developmentally supporting our students at each grade level. They get weekly lessons, thinking about problem solving. A lot of times it's how do you be an up standard? How do you step in when you see social injustices that may be happening in the hallway? How do you make certain that you reach out to somebody who may be struggling? And especially now when we see so many of our students who may be struggling with distance and the changes that are happening. So second step is probably more important than ever. So it's really wonderful that we have the foundation. It's a program we've been working with for a number of years. Also, they've been utilizing responsive classrooms. And that starts with a morning meeting. And I cannot tell you the power of sitting down with students in the morning and checking on them. Having them share something that's happening at home. Sometimes the only adults that they will have the chance to talk to may be that classroom teacher. Sometimes even in the audience that they have for that day, maybe their peers at that time. So taking that and making certain that they have consistency. They know what to expect. They know what are their boundaries. I think especially with responsive classrooms, when we need such compliance and having the kids understand why they are having to act differently this year. Why they have to stand farther apart in line? Why is that important to give social distance when you so much want to be with your friends? So making certain that we're using constant language and there's logical consequences. At Chapag, they are working with their wingman program, which is, you know, Dylan's program. And Dylan was a child who unfortunately was Sandy Hook, one of the first graders. And his father had come out, is working closely with Mike Croft in order to make certain they're sharing the story. And making certain that they know how to reach out and, you know, teaming up and making certain that there's inclusivity. Additionally, Chapag has done things with monthly advisories in which they're working on what is equity? What, how are we making certain we're building tolerance, awareness to what's happening? And making certain that we are being responsive to what we see in those hallways? And we're crafting lessons. I'm going to tell you, our children are not immune to some of the things that are happening in society. And we need to lean in. And that's what we're doing on a monthly basis. And as you know, and what we're very proud of is that all of our schools have those Ben Bell's murals. Right now Burnham is working towards their Ben Bell's mural. That got a little sidetracked due to COVID. But that mural is not just about what's on the wall. It's about embracing and holding true to what is the spirit of. Making certain that we are being kind and we celebrate that kindness. So I wanted to share some of the things that we see happening at our schools. So at Washington Primary, they have a heroes program. And that is their way to have their kindness. It goes through and uses community meetings in order to promote some of those activities. We do a lot with anti-bullying groups, utilizing Danbury Women's Group. There's community outreach, how are we connecting to support? One of the things that I will say, and I will echo 100 times, is that a connected student is a better student. Being connected to community, being connected to their educators, being connected to one another. And making certain that we take opportunities within our curriculum to do literature studies. And that we're looking at things like, what does our library offer? Children who are looking for books that that may look like them. And it is not about a, you know, the typical white Protestant middle-class economics. But really sitting there and saying, well, what about the experience and the plight of the African-American students? What about the plight of Asian students who have come, you know, to the United States? And immigrants and making certain that our students have opportunities to read about it in a safe way that helps them evaluate some of the things that they may be seeing in the news. And evaluates and really make those decisions as far as how do they want to treat others who are different? How do you ask those questions and invite conversations that build that tolerance? At Booth Free and Burnham, again, school-wide activities. You'll see we have the Ben's Bell Kind Campuses. The Upstandards in Action. And that really an up standard is somebody who sees bullying or sees unkindness and steps in. Doesn't just walk away. One of the things that I think we get most discouraged by is not always just the bully that's doing the bullying, but the person who didn't stop it. When you look around and other people aren't stepping in, it almost looks like there's a supportive nature. And so really getting our students to know that stepping in and protecting someone and protecting feelings, it can save a life. Again, you'll see the work with Greater Danbury Programs, making certain that bullying is not tolerated. Additionally, we look at Unity Day. There's a mural that exists right now at Burnham. And if you have not seen it, it is a beautiful bird that has elements of all the students in the school. So making projects that really are about bringing people together. Additionally, making certain that we're looking at our behaviors. We look for trends on a regular basis. If we start to see students who are acting differently, acting out or quieting down, do we see something different happening with their friend groups? Is something different happening at home? So all of these things are those trigger points to make certain that we're watching each and every student, especially during this fragile time. You know, as Teresa shared with you, that emotional stability and what's happening is so important, not just for our adults. And so whereas we're doing some work with the adults, it's also about the work that we're doing with our students. And again, developing our library. Chapag has done a lot more with homegrown projects and programming. So again, responding to what's happening in the hallways, having a little bit more sophisticated conversation. I believe it was, if it wasn't last week, it was the week before. They had the Wounded Warriors Project and had Salvatore Gonzalez come and talk about how, what his path was like, knowing that he was an immigrant and is a soldier. And making certain our students know, what does an American look like? Because I think at some point, we know that there's so many times in society, there's a rejection of people who are coming to America and recognizing them. What is an American and how do we change and evolve to make certain that we're including others? And so, you know, bringing in these opportunities for conversations, responding to some of the political turmoil. They actually brought in Michelle Gora and Jim Brenton to have a conversation of how you can sit on opposite sides of the political battle and come off and still work with one another and have respect for one another. And what does this look like when there's civil in politics? And civility in politics is sometimes a rarity. And we want to make certain our kids see that. It doesn't have to be. And these are things where we want to emphasize some of those positive interactions. Additionally, you'll see they're doing a lot of work with disciplinary, again, watching for our students' patterns and trends. How do we make certain that we're responding to what we see in the hallway? Comes from some of the data we pull with behaviors. We want to make certain that we are emphasizing not just kindness, but acceptance. And again, the literature studies that we do tend to be more around the summer book reads as well as building our library collections. So again, the reason that I'm going to continue to keep bringing this up is because diversity and inclusion is not a point in time. It is something that we're going to continuously look at. I want to continuously bring to the board things that we are doing. It is my expectation that we'll continue to do more. And we're going to now take that from giving you the foundation of what's happening to talk about what some of either the implementation or the new activities that we're going to build in to make certain that our students know that the world around them is a lot bigger than Washington, Roxbury and Bridgewater. And they need to make certain that they are adapting to the world, not asking the world to adapt to them.
Thank you. Do we have questions?
I just, did you say Jen?
Yes, Jen.
I just wanted to thank you, Megan. And I think that I applaud you and all of the administration, all administrators, rather, just to continue this conversation. I think it's really important. And I'm just, you know, kudos to you. Awesome.
Okay. Well, on a similar topic, Megan, winter sports.
Sure. Here I'm talking about unity and then say, look, we can't have teams right now. Um, so right now, the C I A C has suspended winter sports until January 19. They recognize that the number of red towns that exist, that competition in sports is not safe at this time. Once the C I A C will re-meet and make their decision, we need to make a decision that is right for us at that time. So I don't want everybody to think we're going to blindly go where the C I A C takes us. We are evaluating for what we can do. I can tell you, I've had conversations with Matt Parachi. The original goal was to have him lay out what winter sports was going to look like. But right now, I don't want to put out false promises on something that may not happen. So we're certainly looking at how competitions are held. You know, I know track and field, that indoor track had always been very large groups of multiple towns coming together. We know that can't happen. So we're looking to see, well, what types of competitions are they going to have? Are they going to have virtual competitions? Is that something we could participate in where it's done safely? I want to make certain that we are looking at our children in totality. They need recreation. They need exercise. But we are certainly not going to introduce something that is not safe because of our desire to have some normalcy. So right now, things that we look at, there are high-risk sports that we will not participate in. Fortunately for us, we don't have a wrestling team. That would be considered a high-risk sport. Right now, they were saying hockey was falling under the high-risk sport. The moderate-risk sports, we are certainly looking at. A moderate-risk sport would be something like basketball. And those are ones that right now, the recommendation is, is if it is able to be played, it would be played with masks. It would be looking at no audience. And I do have to say, I know I'm breaking a lot of hearts. We limited our ability to have spectators in the fall. If indeed, we are able to go forward in the winter, it would be with no live spectators. But we would certainly look at how we can livestream. And Matt has done considerable research to make certain that we would have the ability to have families be able to be proud of their child just from a distance. So we're looking at all of those things. I can tell you, I'm not optimistic, given the trends of COVID. I'm more worried about us being open after Christmas than I was between Thanksgiving and Christmas. So to say that that may be when we're looking again at whether sports can go forward. I have my reservations, but I wanted to let everybody know the status of where we are with our sports playing at this time.
Well, Megan, thank you very much. You know, oddly enough, there have been a lot of articles recently about skiing, which would seem to be the quintessential socially-distanced winter sport, except for everything around skiing. So that's an interesting, well, think about it. You end up leaving the trails and going into a lodge filled with people. So what you have to do is find a new way to basically go, don't see anybody, stay away from everyone, ski and leave. It's the golf of winter. What can I say? Maybe. And speaking of sports, Joe, I really don't really want to gloat on this point. But the Washington Footballers beat the Steelers 23 to 17. Steelers were undefeated until tonight. Washington was four and seven. And so as much as I don't want to gloat. Congratulations. But no, seriously, getting back to our business. We have a couple items on the action agenda. There are three items listed. The third one is going off because the Operations and Finance and Operations Committee decided not to proceed with an amendment to policy 3323. They're working on it. So we're going to do one and two. The first one is, I'll accept a motion to approve the board meeting schedule, the proposed board meeting schedule for 2021, 22. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Moved by Lisa. Is there a second? I heard Mike Sinatra first. Okay, so moved in second. And is there any discussion? Megan, how did you, let's see, no, never mind. That's okay. I'm going to move past that. Good. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, signify by saying nay. I hear no nays. All those abstaining. Okay, it's unanimous. Approved. I'll accept a motion to delay the use of facilities to outside groups until March 1, 2021. A motion and a second to put it on the floor, then we'll discuss it. I'm going to give Julie that one. Is there a second? Okay, I see Mary. I know someone else said it first, but that's it. Moved in second. Now discussion. I'm sorry, Megan, do you want to say something?
I was just going to give a little bit of rationale at the date choice. We recognize that right now, with the delay of the winter sports season, as well as recognizing right now, I don't see our ability to open up our schools, given it's hard enough to keep schools open for our students who are there. Reason I chose March 1st, we have a board meeting on February 22nd. So that gives us a little bit of time to get through the thick of it. And we can reevaluate if we need to push it out further, if that feels like an appropriate time.
Okay, further discussion? I really cannot wait for the day when we can let people into the building. I wish we were there, but maybe we'll be there in the spring. Who knows? Okay, I'm sorry, Mary.
I think that that's a good date to go to. A March 1st is a good date. And I'm in favor of casting the motion.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? I hear none opposed. All those abstaining? All right, I think it's unanimous. We have postponed the use of facilities to outside groups until March 1, 2021. Unless there is anything else to come before this meeting.
The other day when it was snowing and raining and sleeting and thundering, I had the opportunity to view the drama production, the fall of 2020. It was absolutely spectacular. I thought the, I want to congratulate the writers for their scripting, their comedic ingenuity and wittiness, the actors in their costumes. It shows that it doesn't take a lot of money to do a cool production. And especially, I want to thank Ben Allen for directing it. Really great job. I applaud all, everyone involved. And thank you for enriching our world a little bit.
Thank you very much for that comment. It just shows that there is no can't do it at Chapag, that's for sure. It's a can-do operation. And I think everyone associated with that has to be congratulated. Is there a way for us all to tune in, John, if we missed it? Is it posted?
There's a link on an email somewhere in your email.
No, I remember that, but good luck finding those emails now.
It was over the weekend.
I hope it gets posted on the social media of the Region 12 site.
All right, well, if we all haven't had a chance to see it, we should definitely tune in. Okay. Okay. If there's nothing else to come before the meeting, then I will declare it adjourned by consent at 8:52.